Okay, so first on the agenda is to talk about what you just worked on. So I wonder if you want to start, do you want to put it on the screen?
Yeah, I can do that.
One second, get that up for us.
Okay, can you all see that screen?
Yeah.
Yep. So just to walk you guys through kind of what, how my head worked in thinking about this and putting this together, and it still needs some work for sure. But as I looked at the detailed list of steps, Susan, that you had prepared for us, and we walked through the last meeting. What I thought about is that there appear to be three distinct phases to the next year. One of them, and the first one we're in now, is a bit of a planning phase, but also our effort to engage the community in both Berlin and Boylston. And so I've got that phase set up as really a five-month period, starting now through the first quarter of 2022. And writing here that during this phase, the school committee will conduct meetings and distribute communications that are intended to inform the public on the role of school committee members on the election timeline, and on the process for interested candidates to run for the available seats. A couple of the specific items that were in the more detailed timeline that I pulled into this is that there will be a presentation to town officials and boards. And that, Susan, is you and Lori, right, doing that as chair and vice chair?
We're going to the select board. And when you say boards, who are officials, who are you thinking up there?
I didn't want to get too detailed in kind of like listing town clerks and town administrators, but in my thought is that it's anyone, anyone who we think needs to know. And to some extent, I think you've already started to do this by talking to the clerks, I know in particular, and others about this process.
Yeah, I, the word boards threw me because I thought maybe, please, we're not meeting with the Board of Health or the Board of, you know, whatever.
Yeah.
Fire Department, all those people. So it might be administrators or something there.
Yeah.
Administrators would, would kind of cover bases.
I just took it to mean the both boards in both towns.
Well, then the town officials, yeah, so I just want to be clear who.
Yeah, so I mean, I can get more details, but town clerks.
Town clerk, selectmen, yeah, that's, that's true to what we're doing, yeah.
Town clerks. Administers and selectmen.
Yeah.
Um, next thing I had here, and this is something that we didn't have, but I want to suggest we do, is that we have some opportunity in this period, especially for interested candidates, to attend an open forum type of meeting with the full committee, where we as the subcommittee will present the process and the timeline to anyone who's interested, and that the full committee will be available to take questions from interested candidates. I know that the opportunity to ask current members about the role and how much time it takes them and those kinds of things would likely be welcomed, I think, by potential candidates. And my thought was that the full committee would be available for that kind of forum.
So that's intended for people who might be interested in running?
Is that what you're saying? I think that's the primary audience. I think anyone might otherwise decide to attend, but I have this timed before the nomination process. So hey, if you're interested in running or learning more about being on the school committee, we're going to have an open forum where you can ask questions to the current members of the committee, maybe even the superintendent, and, and do so, because our school committee meetings aren't obviously conducive to that back and forth Q and A. So I think it's a separate, specific time we do something like that.
Yeah, so, so would this include people who just want to understand more about, you know, why the election didn't occur and what, just more about how the election process will work for the voters as well?
I think from an agenda standpoint, I wouldn't necessarily get into why the election didn't occur kind of stuff, but I think if that's a question that comes up, we can answer it in the setting of that. And that kind of, it's a good point, because I also, and I don't want to jump ahead too much, but as I thought about FAQs, I thought about the typical questions we might get from residents and voters.
Yeah.
Versus the typical questions we might get from candidates. So when I think about that forum, I think about building an agenda around the typical candidate. But you know, if someone shows up and wants to ask a question, I think we can, you know, answer to the best of our ability.
Okay, all right, that's helpful. I think there, it could be. I'm wondering if you want to frame it as a candidate forum.
Yeah, I like that.
Or a forum for candidates.
Do you want to get into calling it candidate, anything at this point? Because there are no candidates, you know?
Right, it's not quite the right language, you're interested in running or something.
Maybe just, maybe just call it an election information discussion or something.
That's, that's a good point, election information session, and when we publish the agenda, the agenda should make it clear that we're planning to talk about. It would be a great time for candidates to come to something like this, because I also think there are likely to be people in the community who approach us, no one has yet, but people in the community who approach us over the next couple of months, wanting to know about running themselves. And it'd be great to be able to point them to this.
Yes.
As the place to be able to get asked their questions.
The other thing is in, you know, I mentioned in the last meeting that I would, had drafted up a community engagement school committee goal based on the feedback.
Yep.
Then bring to the next meeting. And the, one of the things on there is for the school committee to work with the administration to host a couple of public forums. So this is, this fits right in.
And then the third item I had pulled as kind of a high-level item here would be that we will, during the course of this period, publish election information in FAQs on our website, and that we'll share a link to that information across channels. So I think there's probably going to be an opportunity for us to get an article written in the Telegram or the item, or the one of the same to some extent. Having it available in the school, in the school newsletters that go to parents.
Yeah.
And also getting it posted in the community Facebook pages. I do think we're going to want to potentially talk to the administrators of those pages about how that might get posted appropriately. And how often, right? But I certainly, I'd rather, to some extent, have those posts, I think, come probably from you, Susan, in the pages, and talk to the page administrator specifically about when and how they'd like us to do that.
Yeah, I might add a bullet, although I don't want to mess up your formatting. The, I, I think the COA newsletters is another piece, I mean, I'm thinking about engaging other portions of the community beyond the school.
What's the COA?
Council on Aging. So that's, that, those usually go out to everybody like over sixty in a community. And, and actually, the over, I know in Berlin, the over sixty or over sixty-five crowd is, is a third of the town.
Yep.
So something like.
I could see us looking, even like, I know the Lions Club is pretty active in Boylston, and we could take, have some kind of, you know, communication we send out to some of those community organizations, including something like the COA, and say, hey, here's, here's the information.
Yeah, yeah, good.
I like that.
And I, I think though, the highlighted groups you have, you've highlighted them because you're, you want to confirm them, is that the idea there?
On this, on this box, I'm thinking that this is kind of the responsible party.
Yeah.
Parties from our standpoint, right? So I think the presentation to clerks is going to be you, you and or Lori. The full committee to participate in the, on the open forum opportunity, and that the subcommittee, this group will be responsible for making sure all these things happen. And in some cases, specifically around the FAQs, I have a comment, I think we'd be good to get those FAQs in front of the committee, and to get feedback on both, are they the right questions? And agree with these answers, because those answers are going to be committee answers, and make sure everyone has a chance to kind of weigh in on them.
Yeah, I, I think that's great. And so when we, if we include this, you're thinking of this as the cover sheet to the timeline? Or, I mean, at least for going to the selectmen and the administrators, I wouldn't put this timeline to the public.
This, no, I don't.
Yeah, okay.
I agree. I, I think the only public distribution of that timeline, Susan, would be during the school committee meeting when we presented to the committee. But I wouldn't necessarily then publish that proactively on this, this page.
Right, right.
If someone requested it, hey, it's available, but there's a lot of detail in terms of exactly who's doing what and specific dates, and they just get too detailed for the.
No, it's not intended for public consumption per se. The, so when we put this sheet on top of this sheet for the selectmen and the town administrators clerks, would you include these roles in there, or is that for our reference?
I just wanted to, in this meeting, get us on the same pages to those three kind of responsibilities, and I was going to take that off.
Okay, I mean, we should keep a copy of that, in case we want to look back at that for ourselves within the committee. Or, or even have this copy for when it goes to school committee, because school committee will want to know how that's parsed out. But when we send it outward, we should have a, like a copy without that, probably.
That's a great idea, yep.
Okay.
And then we move into this nomination phase, starting sometime in April through some date in July. And then during this phase, residents of Boylston and Berlin will be able to take out nomination papers from either the district clerk, and I think we talked about that being Christie, if I recall.
We're going to come back to that, this next coming up agenda.
Or the town clerk, they can go to the town clerks to get their papers as well.
Correct.
And then, you know, from in terms of other kind of key activities that are going to happen here, you know, in my opinion, right, the election information that we published here remains available on this, on the district website, and we look to continue to just reshare and send as reminders that information out through whatever channels are available, and I kind of take all this stuff here and just copy to here again.
Yeah.
Some of those other ones.
And, and we may update it too, according to the kinds of questions that we see showing up.
Totally. I also think that at times, there might be things that are more relevant to the time we're in.
Yeah.
And we might add additional, you know, kind of content. That's why on the third page, I kind of added a little bit of a revision history for us to kind of just keep track of where we're making those changes. And then once that nomination process is complete, I think we know that there's a process to certify nominations and do all of that, but from a, from a public candidate understanding and voter understanding of what's happening next, sometime as early as May and through the election date, candidate will campaign for office and may choose to participate in organized public forums and to distribute campaign materials throughout the community. This is a question I think we have to think about as a committee, and if we want to host some kind of candidate forum or debate as a district or as a committee, I know that I happened to see that Worcester just had a school committee debate, I know, I think yesterday. I think part of that's going to determine, will be determined based upon how many candidates there are. And how we want to, as a district in school committee, how do we want to kind of position that type of thing? To me, debate, just the term, comes across as a little more back and forth. Trump and Biden, you know, arguing kind of thing.
Yeah.
And maybe, maybe as a school committee, it's appropriate to organize a forum. And if Worcester Telegram wants to organize a debate, then they can go ahead and do that, or if a candidate wants to organize a debate themselves, they can do that. But I'm not sure that we as a committee necessarily want to sponsor a quote-unquote debate.
Somebody said to me, and I can't remember who, who this was or what context, somebody said to me, they didn't think that the committee should be hosting any, any kinds of for, forum debates around this, because there could be a conflict of interest because members of the current committee are
Right.
also running. And in a lot of communities, there are League of Women voters who organize these things. I don't, I don't recall ever seeing an active group in this town. But I think, like, the PTO groups could easily sponsor these forums, I think, would be a really interesting thing for them to do.
That's a great idea.
But there may be other groups as well who are interested in doing that kind of thing, but I think it probably should not be the district.
Okay, Mike, you on the same page with that?
Yeah, I think I, Susan, I think you and I talked about that at one point. Yeah.
Yeah, maybe that was you that said that, yeah.
So I'm just going to take that bullet out and basically go back.
Good to say, you know, they, we said organize public forums, yeah, so that's, maybe you've got it covered there.
Yeah, you take the district part out of it, right?
Yeah.
Um, and then, you know, the election will occur on November eighth, twenty twenty-two, the six elected candidates will take office on November ninth, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah. I, I really appreciate the always visual display of information. I just think that's always helpful to encapsulate the information into something visually memorable. And I, I think this does that. It also visually just sort of shows that there's a lot of work during the engagement phase, and it gets sort of more and more targeted as you go to the right, to the election phase.
And I think your, your presentation to the selectmen will be met positively with the community engagement piece here, and us getting a little more detailed in that piece in particular about how we intend to engage the community, and I, I would be open to, you know, input from both select boards too, as to whether there's, as you just did with the COA newsletter, right, are there other channels we're missing? Or I'm not thinking, what are other activities they think we should be conducting during that community engagement phase? Because to me, that's the, that's the piece that's probably been the biggest gap over the last couple of years of the whole election process. And, and even, you know, I think selectmen themselves prior to now, haven't necessarily understood or known what is this process. And I think, like I said, you know, I know that when I went in to get sworn in myself, you know, you having gone and talking, having spoken with the town clerk in Boylston was the first time someone from the committee had done that, right? And I think that showing we're doing that is, is a an improvement from potential in the past.
Yeah, I, I think so, that's the feedback I'm hearing also. And I think those are all good questions to bring to any group that we meet with or any individual that we meet with, including, are there, are there other questions that should be on our FAQs? For residents, voters, or candidates that come to mind? So basically, getting feedback on all these pieces that we're about to start to work on.
Yep.
Yeah. I think this is great. I would love to see this on top. As I said, with, with the roles included for the town boards and the administrators and town clerks, so they have the fully detailed version.
Yep.
And then when we take this public, then I think we one of the tasks is to figure out, do we want to do a a, a version that's either like this one on the screen or a down, a one-page version of this that would be for the average citizen or candidate.
There's a panther behind you, Susan, be careful.
Yeah, I know, that's just one of my two Panthers, this is. I like screen them out until they demand my attention, which I start eating papers on my desk, which drives me crazy, but anyway. So I think that's great. Mike, any other comments on this piece?
No, I like it. I think this especially will be helpful trying to teach people, you know, community-wise. Yeah, I was, as you were going through this, mentioning visual data, I'm kind of drawing in my notes here, sort of a infographic type of thing, you know, with changing in the seasons here, spring, fall.
Yeah.
Basically, these dates, you know, sort of picturing a roadmap, so to say, of that, so we can do that too, that's all good.
Yeah, I, I think there could be a variety of graphics that was kind of
Yeah.
put out there.
I think as we think about all the different things we're going to share on the website and other places, the more graphical we can be.
Yeah.
With it, the better.
Yeah, different, different media, different different engagement pieces.
Yeah, you're, you're making me think it would be awesome to have an actual logo for the school committee election twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
So they, they see.
I bet you we could get a. Are there any, like, graphic design students or anything that we could ask to?
Probably in the high school.
Yeah, you know, funny, when we walked through town, they had a bunch of kids in that room who were working in Photoshop. When we walked by the graphic design room, I think that would be a great idea.
Yeah.
I'm sure we'll get that, and get that involved, there's some sort of, I'm sure there's a civics or American history or something, of course, could get involved if you want to go that way, you know?
Yeah, yes, that's true. And the it'd be actually really cool to get the students involved in just the forums. The students could host a forum.
I love that.
For
Yeah, why not?
The seniors and the, I mean, they're eligible to vote when they're seniors, is that voting age?
If they're eighteen, yeah, eighteen, yeah.
Could be.
So some of them, or they could, they could organize a forum to engage the, the older students through the public in the community, that would be an interesting thing. But anyway, I was picturing all of a sudden some, some kind of little vibrant logo that people would see over and over on anything that goes out, that would be a good cue.
The seal we have now is pretty formal-looking, you know, I think something that's a little more modern would be great.
Yeah, I mean, something that's particular to the election.
Right.
Right, not, not the school district per se. Hang on, just making a note.
One thing I was going to say is what I'll also do coming out of this is maybe just, I might reformat the, the size of some of these boxes a little bit, and add just a couple of sentences at the top of this page, informing the group you're presenting to us of why we're showing them this and what it is, as kind of like a cover, cover statement across the top of this. I might take a stab at that, and then I'll, I'll let you guys know when it's updated, and we can, we can share that.
Good. All right. All right, good, we ready to move on?
The second, just real quick, the second slide I have here.
I forgot there was a second, sorry, yeah.
Okay, is FAQs. And so I think we don't necessarily need to go through all these right now, today, but as I started writing these up, it became evident to me that there are kind of two sets of them, if we had to decide whether we want to display them separately or not. But I think about what kind of questions are the voters and residents of the town going to have? People who aren't interested in running? When was the last election? Why wasn't there an election in twenty twenty? What seats are open? Who gets to vote? And that's obviously a pretty, probably the most complicated one, not only who vote, who do you get to vote for? And people understanding how that's all going to work. And then I think on the candidate side, hey, what's the role of a school committee member? How much time do members typically spend working on school committee business? Who's eligible to run for a seat? What seats are open? What's the term of office? And I wanted to look at just kind of do some Google searches of other districts, especially in Massachusetts, who might have published a similar FAQ? And see if we're missing anything here. I mean, and this is one piece that I, in particular, would want to bring to the full committee to review and vote on, especially when it comes to how we answer these FAQs.
Yeah, I, one that came to mind for the top section is, why is the twenty twenty-two school committee election so important? Or especially important or something, I'm going to elevate it in some way, because this particular, I mean, you could say every election's important, but I think we could put out an argument that this election has particular importance.
Well, what, as you, as you asked, I'm thinking of two different things, Susan, when you think about that question, how would you think the answer to that would look?
Well, to me, and I had said this to the committee, this, the next school committee will be involved in selecting the next superintendent and approving the next five-year district improvement plan. So those are pretty significant influences, I would say.
And I, we wanted this later, but.
Our next five years, I would say, or four years, maybe, is the term.
Four years for the election, right?
Yeah, it's the longest term of office, yeah.
Because I, when I think about the important, one of the things I thought about is also a little different than what's happened in the past and what's going to happen in the future, in terms of the number of candidates on the ballot and the seats they're going to be in for. So there's, there's a component there, it's kind of what, what's unique about this one compared to the ones we're going to have in the future.
Yeah, maybe make that a separate question even.
Yeah. When you think about, it's the first election since
Twenty twenty.
What do I want to say about combining of the districts since?
Twenty eight, oh, oh.
Regionalization?
Yeah. Yeah.
Because originally, when the regional committee was created, they took the three people from Berlin and the three people from Boylston, right, and put them together under the and there's a lot of different answers, there's a lot of loaded questions, there's a lot of different things to be informed of, on what makes this one unique. First one's.
You mean, in this question, do you mean what makes the committee unique or this election?
Election, yep.
Okay, and so do you want all three of those questions, or are you generating here?
I'm just generating, we might end up reorganizing a little bit, I'm just kind of taking some notes down here, based on what we're talking about. Because I think, this is what I was thinking about when you asked, when you first mentioned important, you know, were you thinking some of the things you were saying, which I think are appropriate? You know, you know, district.
Hiring.
Do we know that Jeff isn't going to be interested in an extended contract?
I mean, that's what he said to us, he's, he's, he's got his retirement date in pla, in place, I think.
Okay.
That's what he's always said. I did ask him, I think I asked him, we can confirm this with him, but I, I did ask him, is that okay to say publicly? And he, at school committee, and he had said, yes, so.
Because his contract right now goes through twenty twenty-five.
Is that right? That doesn't sound right.
I, I looked at it, actually.
Twenty twenty-five, this is twenty twenty-one?
Yeah.
January, is it January of twenty twenty-five? He, he was hired in, in January, he started in January, so that, that might be.
Contract I see here, no, it's, so it's, it was signed by Jeff and Jim in January of twenty twenty.
Okay.
For a five-year.
Really like the end of twenty twenty-four.
The agreement commences on July first, twenty twenty, and terminates on July thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, that's good.
And by June thirtieth, twenty-four, so a year in advance, he has to inform the committee in writing whether he desires to commence negotiations for another agreement.
Right.
And renew it. So that twenty-four, twenty-five year is technically contractually his final year, now he could choose to, to leave earlier, right? Or he could choose to continue in the role beyond that, or want, desire to continue in the role beyond that. But right now, his contract goes through June thirtieth, twenty-five.
So this, this is accurate, then, when we say that within the four, next four years, there will be a new superintendent.
Yes.
A superintendent contract, yeah.
Yeah, because his contract would expire June twenty twenty-five, and there would be an election November twenty twenty-five. No. No.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, and then twenty-six, so.
Yeah, some of, some people won't be.
The four-year term people, if they're all four years, will be involved in that.
Yeah.
The two-year term people, this, might not.
Right, unless they ran again. And then the, yeah, so it's either contract renewal or a new contract.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, so the the answers to that third bullet are the same answers for the fourth bullet, right? So that we choose between those questions, right?
Yeah. Yep.
So which one, I don't know, which is more compelling when you read it without the answers there? I'm assuming that you wouldn't include those responses, those are our notes.
Yeah, those are our notes for right now, I think, until we get the committee to, to kind of review the answer to all of them. My only comment about importance or like even uniqueness is that, is that an opinion versus a fact? And the fact is that we think these items are likely to come before the committee, we know some of them are.
Yeah.
Whereas other things important, that's kind of us deciding they're important or not.
Yeah.
So I, I think we can think about that before we present it to the committee.
Yeah, I think that's, I, you know, that's fine, I, I'm happy to keep these factual.
Yeah.
Yeah, the uniqueness one should stay, because, you know, it is first time since regionalization, every seat is available. It's the first time both towns are voting, et cetera, you know? I think the uniqueness part should stay, the other two, I agree with what you said.
Because I'll tell you what, this is one that I, if I was running and not knowing what I know now, this is, this would be really interesting to me to understand what. This is, this would be really interesting to me to understand what. What things do we, there's always gonna be things that come to the table that we can't predict, but there are certain things we know. Are gonna come into play. In this period.
Yep.
When is the current, the current improvement plan, Susan expires when?
This is year four, right?
This is year four, yeah. So at the end of next year, at next school year, so twenty-two, twenty-three, end of twenty-three.
So new district improvement plan. Which will be. Twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty.
Well, I mean, you could phrase the second one the same way, new superintendent contract June twenty twenty-five. Just take out expires, yeah.
Two-year people are gonna be involved in that because you're, if Jeff tells us June twenty-four, he doesn't want to be renewed. You haven't had an election yet. All six people who are elected are gonna be part of that. It may or may not be voting on it if they don't get reelected after the end of the two-year term or another four-year term, but. We certainly, we're gonna have a new superintendent before he. Leaves.
This is actually where a nice little visual timeline would be a nice slide to have up there at some point that shows the. Intervals of the election cycle against when these things are happening.
Yeah, even for. Especially when we look at the information we want to publish on that election site on the side, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Thing to have there.
The other thing that Mike had just said underneath the fourth bullet. Was it's the first time that both towns are voting for candidates in both towns. Right? Is that what it was, Mike? I forget how you said it.
Yeah, that's still, that's, that's the case, right? That's fact.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's new, that's gonna be new to everybody. Everybody's gonna shake their head at that at first.
Right.
I mean, I, I, I had a conversation with somebody and someone who's, you know, somewhat knowledgeable on this and, and. It was a foreign concept that all six of us represent the residents of both towns. And are elected by the residents of both towns as opposed to what they're more familiar with from the past, that they're being employed and.
Yes, correct, yeah.
You might think about this piece too, Mike, this first time that both are. Voting as an answer here. As to who votes.
Yep.
Yeah.
Cause these two, as I thought about these two questions, there, there's some similarity between what's gonna go in the answer to these two.
It is a feature that makes this election unique.
This is the only time.
Yeah.
Will be open, yeah.
I think we understand the reasoning for that in order to create the staggered. Term, but that's, that's one I think that a visual is gonna be huge for people to see. We're voting for six. Three of them are gonna be a two-year term, three of them are gonna be a two, a four-year term, and then hey, what happens two years from now? Well. These two get, but then two years after that, these two in, in kind of showing over maybe a.
Different towns.
What that looks like, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Right.
Okay, so I think, I think. From a, from a timing standpoint, Susan, in terms of presenting to the committee, we have. A committee report on the agenda for. The meeting on October twenty, what, six?
Yeah.
My suggestion would be that we report out to the committee there.
Yep.
Maybe give them a, I don't know, we wanted to look at the first read on some of this. Or if we have to, but then. Kind of dive into this maybe more at that November ninth meeting, I think it is.
Okay. Yeah, so how much time do you think we want at this next meeting? We're gonna be planning that next Tuesday, so.
I would suggest that we could present this, the basic timeline. To the committee on, at that meeting.
This timeline here.
In the questions, but not the answers.
Yes.
The questions. And then kind of coming out of that, say that we're gonna have another subcommittee meeting between. The meeting on October and the meeting in November and we'll draft. Answers to these questions that the committee's reviewed and said these are the good questions to have. And then we can read through those answers in November and then maybe vote on it in December.
Yep. Yeah, so I think in, in December, what we want to get to is vote on. Some of these core materials that we're gonna draw from. And as well as the specific kinds of activities that. We want to engage in so that the commit, whatever you, you go off to do, basically. You, you're sanctioned by the committee to, to speak on these topics. Right? And so they, they need to know. Like what kind of forums are we talking about? What kinds of content would you be sharing? And whether you want to be proposing to the committee that there be. A point person for fielding questions, a contact person for fielding questions, that kind of thing. So by December, we should have approval for anything that you, of course, you can come back and say later, oh, we would like to do this, but. It would be good to have some of that. Front run, some of what we anticipate.
I like that. And I, I think that in a perfect world, we're gonna, the questions we get are gonna be. The factual questions we get. Will be able to point people to a resource where those answers are. And that way, you know, should someone email us and want to know something? We can reply back very quickly, send them the approved FAQ and information and then. We're not having to kind of make sure, we have something approved from the committee, there's the answer.
Yeah, right, yeah.
There will be other people who probably want to talk. More about, you know, other non-factual things related to it. I mean, we can, you know, avoid that. To whatever extent we're able to individual.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and, yeah, and we need to, again, be able to point to things. So some people may say, I want to talk directly with schools. Some school committee members I know, or I feel comfortable contacting and just ask them questions about their experience on school committee. But it would always be good to say, and there's a public forum where you can hear directly from school committee members and you can ask your questions.
Cause they're gonna come up to us at soccer games and T-ball games and, and you know, recognize who we are and ask and. We're gonna have whatever, you know, casual conversation we have there with them, but then being able to also point them right to the website. You know, shoot them a text right there while we're standing next to them and say, here you go, here's the information.
Okay, so, so back to my question, how much time do you figure on this next school committee meeting to?
Keep it to, I think we can give it to ten minutes.
Okay, Mike, it sounds, sound good.
Yep.
Ten minutes this time and November ninth, I'm thinking more like twenty minutes, thirty?
Yeah, I think. Yeah, I think twenty will be fine, Susan. I, I think that we'll send out. Prior to the, in the meeting materials, we'll get the FA, the, the first slide. And the second side, short of the kind of additional bullets I put on here, just the questions.
Yeah.
In front of people so they can see what those are and they can come with any additional ones or even send them into us before the meeting. And then I think the first meeting go pretty quick and then we'll draft during our, between that and this, in the November meeting. We'll draft our proposed answers to these questions.
Yeah.
And then I think if there's any discussion, it'll likely be there. But I don't necessarily expect a ton, cause we're, cause as long as we're factual, I don't think we'll get a ton of, you know, debate.
Okay, so good. Thank you very much for your work on that, your thought, and I look forward to taking that forward. That's good. The election timeline feedback, so I did interact some more with the Mount Greylock District, the both. Town clerks in their reviews raised some particular questions, which is exactly what I want them to do. Because I don't want to get down the line and have them say, wait, I thought you were ordering the ballots. Who's supposed to order the ballots? And that was a question that came up. Then it's like, yeah, wow, I don't know. Let me go back to Mount Greylock and find out how they handle that. So we, we made a few more little kinds of additions and, and moved a couple of things around. And this most current iteration. And I heard from Boylston Town Clerk after review of this iteration, this looks good. I will check in, town clerks are only in their office Tuesdays and Thursdays, so. It's my task to call Eloise in Berlin today. And just see if there's anything else. I imagine she would have let me know if there was, but I just want to confirm. So I think this is our most specific and complete version of the timeline now. And. It is ready to go to school committee this, this time, this, for this meeting. And then it will go to. This town administrators and select board people in November.
And when are you, when are you going to the select meetings, Susan?
Yeah, they are. I can tell you, hang on. Boylston is November eighth. And Berlin is November fifteenth.
Okay, perfect. And I would think, you know, I think our committee's meeting is, was ours the ninth?
Yes.
So I would think that coming out of the meeting in October. You'd also be able to bring, even though the committee hasn't reviewed the answers yet, you could bring the two things here, cause we would have reviewed it in October.
Yeah.
Along with your longer detailed one, yeah.
Yeah, and so I'll solicit their input according to whatever time they have on those items that we talked about earlier. Okay. Any other questions about this timeline? I feel really good that we have, I, I, I'm getting feedback from. All the town clerks that they're really happy to have this worked out. They had so many questions at the start and I feel like we've resolved, so far we've resolved them all and I, my assumption is something's gonna come up. That we didn't think of, but we're in so much better position to be able to handle. It's not likely to be a big item. It's likely to be a small item, so.
Do you know, or does it come up in your conversations with them, Susan, as to what other? Town offices are gonna be up for election at the same time?
No, I haven't asked that.
Cause I know that the, I, I, my recollection is that Boylston. The town, the selectmen's election is in like May.
Yeah, right.
And the, we're gonna be on the ballot with, you know, the congressman and.
I, I don't, I don't think it, it probably is gonna be town offices on this ballot.
Yeah, in, in May, right? I don't know, they're gonna, are we gonna be the only local election on the ballot in November twenty-three?
Yeah, I, I'll check on that. I, I assume that that's probably so. But I will confirm that, good question. Okay. Alright, I talked to Jeff about the town clerk position and. Our interest in having the town clerk position reside in the central office and. Jeff's, Jeff did not want to do that because. Primarily because he didn't want to overload Christie's position, which is already very, very full with many things. And is stressful. He, I said, you know, one of our concerns is that the. With the changeover in school committee roles, it's just so easy to miss some critical date. And, and he said. They're expecting that Chris, that Chris, Christie or whoever's in her position. When they receive the dates from the state. And that first date letter that comes through. That lists all the information. In April. Christie will add that all to her calendars and she will send reminders to the district clerk. Oh, this is, you need to do this in the coming whatever, two weeks by such as a deadline. So she will serve as the reminder and the. Monitor of the timeline of tasks, but the district clerk, our person, whoever we appoint, needs to. Do the task. And so I felt like that, that can work because as long as that district clerk person is not out on a limb. Carrying the whole weight without anybody else helping them, especially if they're new. To monitor that timeline and make sure things, and is, and I looked through here, you know, to see. How many things have the district clerk's name on them, right? So you have that April first notification, April fifteenth notification, which is critical. And then posting the open seats and information about that and staying in clear touch with. But anything you send out gets copied to the town clerks. And then taking out nomination papers.
You know, I think.
And then, and then, then it's quiet until the election. And the district clerk stores all the election materials and contacts the new school committee members. So there, there's some deadlines up front. And then it's quiet.
May I ask a question? So the, when we created the subcommittees and appointed people to them. I know policy and superintendent evaluation in particular are almost a standing committee. I don't know what they define this, but they are. I, I almost think that once we get through this cycle. It's gonna be appropriate to have the election committee be a standing committee, a pretty, pretty easy one in the future potentially. But I, I, I think making sure that the committee always has. The school committee has a subcommittee of people that are.
Paying attention.
Attention to this.
Yeah.
Will ensure that. We're doing that. And I, I think establishing this as a standing committee in the future would be potentially appropriate.
I just don't know what they do on the in-between years. So maybe it's a bi- biennial standing committee.
Yeah, or even just, you know. Not much.
Right.
Just, and maybe it makes sense just because you've got someone paying attention so that they don't miss the April, the year before deadline.
Cause I, I mean, I felt bad for, for Angela last year when the whole thing got missed, cause I don't, I don't think that was just. On her shoulders, right, as the clerk. And I think, I think she might have felt that way a little bit as the clerk.
I don't think it was, I don't think it was Angela.
I remember it came up in one of your committee meetings last year that I was watching. Where Jim was talking to the, the election process and why it didn't happen and all of that. And I know Angela felt. Bad that she as clerk hadn't recognized the timeline and the, the, the fact we needed to be way in advance on this.
Yeah.
Process to make it happen. I wouldn't want us to just appoint. A district clerk as a, one of the committee members and have it only be on his or her shoulders.
Well, and so that goes to my next comment. You know, I confirmed with Julie, who is our district sec. Our committee secretary, not our clerk per se. That this, this would not be a good role for her this year because she, the two things that she's working on, the superintendent evaluation. And the scholarships all take place in the spring. The heaviest work is in the spring. So I wouldn't want those things to be distracting her from the things here. And so I was thinking that we should appoint. Or I should appoint a district clerk on this committee. Who's already tracking this stuff and is already thinking and being on top of the. Timeline. And so I want to run that by the both of you to see if that would make sense to you to have the district clerk situated in the election subcommittee. That's my first question.
I don't have a problem with that. I can tell you that just personally, keeping track of. Specific dates and timelines and. I, I, I could lose track of that. I don't know that I'm personally the best person to do it. I would, I would just state that off the top.
Okay, Mike?
I'll do whatever you like, Susan, sure. I, I kind of feel I'm the same type of person as Adam probably, but. I don't know, you said Christie's gonna help out remembering things.
Yeah, in terms of, yeah, reminders for dates. And, and I know, and I think that's a question for you too, Adam, is. If Christie is providing those reminders or the committee is starting every committee meeting saying, what's coming up? Let's check the timeline.
That's probably a good point to keep there.
Does that help? Does that change your, your sense about, oh, okay, I actually could manage that?
I guess one question, one of the things that's on there is that. Interested candidates can get. Nomination papers from the district. Nomination papers from the district clerk.
Correct.
Would that work?
Yeah, the, I, I was asking that too, because I said to Eloise, it seems to me when we go pick up. Nomination papers from you, you tell us stuff, like you and you educate us at the same time, like this is how many. Well, obviously, the district clerk would need. To review some of that information, meet with the town clerks and make sure she has that information or he has. And, and then I, I assume that they would say, if you have other questions that you, that come up. Contact your town clerk.
Yeah.
But yes.
Yeah, that's fine.
They can pick them up from the town clerk technically. And they, and they get mailed, they may get mailed to you, I forget who they actually mail to, but. The. I, my guess is that, what, what should happen there? If I were doing that job, I would go to the town clerks and say. You know, teach me what I need to tell people, teach you what I need to be aware of, and then any other things that come up, I'm gonna direct them to you.
Yeah.
Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah.
So. The reason I was asking about you, Mike, I mean, Adam, is because Mike's already on the policy subcommittee and on this committee.
Yep.
And, and he takes minutes at the policy subcommittee, and so I was thinking you probably have a slightly lighter. Load than he does at this time, although you could get pulled into negotiations depending on Megan's schedule and the timing of things in negotiations.
Yeah, so I. I'm willing to do it, let's just make sure that it remains an agenda item in every one of our meetings, to look at the upcoming dates and deadlines. And when it comes to people getting the papers, you know, I, I would most likely encourage them to go to the town clerk to get them. As opposed to stopping by my house to get them or wherever else they do it.
Yeah, right, I know, it's like, where do you want to keep?
I would say, I, I would, I would then say. My preference, because there's a little bit of record keeping that goes into that too, that you've given them out and that they, they're out, they're not back. So I, my, the way I'd approach that specifically with people wanting papers would be to send, encourage people strongly to go to the town clerk to get them.
You know what, the, the issue probably there, the advantage to having a district clerk also distribute them is the town clerk's. Offices are only open like Tuesdays and Thursdays, it's very limited hours.
So if someone can't do it, look, I'll, I'll, I'll have them wherever I have them and can meet someone somewhere to give them to them. If that's not gonna work for them, I'm not saying I'm not gonna do it, but my, my, my default answer would be, can you go to the town clerk again?
Yeah, okay. On every agenda, yeah. Okay, so at this next meeting, I will. Make sure it's on my list here, point district clerk. And I, I think what I'll do is I'll, I'll name you Adam and name Mike as an alternate, so if something happens. And we need a backup, we're covered.
Hey, well, my wife would be much better than I am.
Enlist her support. And it's also one of those things, it's like the first time through, it makes you anxious, and then probably to do it a second time would be like, okay, I get this now.
Yep.
All right, so let me see. I shared the dates of the next select board meetings, and then I think the, the. Since it's ten oh three, I think what we should do is set our, do we have a next meeting date? We don't, right? Get a next meeting date and. And identify what we think the core agenda should be for that meeting. So we're now on October fourteenth, our next meeting is the twenty-sixth, and then the next meeting is, you know, quite soon after. On November ninth. So it sounds like we want to prepare some FAQs and stuff for that, for that ninth meeting, correct? So we're probably looking at maybe meeting the week of the twenty-sixth, the twenty-fifth.
Sorry, I was, I was thinking that going into the twenty-sixth, we're just gonna share the FAQs as we have them now.
Yeah, correct.
And then. Question that becomes, we want to be at, right, immediately after the meeting on the twenty-sixth, or do we want to give ourselves a week? To work on the answers to those before we come together maybe on the third or the fourth.
Okay. We could, we could do that too, yep. I didn't know if you wanted to de, discuss anything after that meeting before you worked on things, or you want, you feel like, well, leave that meeting pretty clear to. Just go to work and bring the next product.
Yeah, and I can even set this document up shared, so that if you guys want to go in and edit any of the answers, you can do that.
Yeah. Good idea, yeah.
So maybe, maybe go to the. The fourth?
November fourth, uh, hang on, that is, we, that is when the MASC conference is going on.
Okay.
Um, I don't know, I just don't know the schedule of those sessions, I know you and I are booked for that, right, Adam?
I, I haven't booked yet, because I'm waiting, I was waiting to see what my schedule was, it looks like.
Okay.
And knowing, I can just add it.
Did you sign up for that, Mike?
No, I'm, I'm, think I'm away actually.
Okay. What about, oh yeah, it's ghost cheese.
What are the dates of that, Susan?
Yeah, it looks like the third on, but I don't know how much activity there is on that first day, I'm just not sure.
You want to do the second?
Election day. We have a policy subcommittee, committee meeting that day, Mike, and I have another meeting that morning.
In that case, I mean, look, there's no reason where.
Let's, let's put it like, if we put it early on the third, it'd probably be fine.
Okay.
That work for you, Mike?
I'm checking, I think so. Yeah, what type, like, same time, nine o'clock?
Yeah.
Yeah. November third, Wednesday, nine, nine to ten, and our agenda will be to review. Draft FAQ documents.
Yeah.
And.
Maybe any other preparation or discussion around presentation to the selectmen?
Yeah, well, I can deb, let's see. I think the review of the FAQ document will be. Sufficient because that will, that's the new piece that I would want to be able to put in front of them. And then the other thing is that we have to get to work on this, really, what, what engagement strategies do we want to propose to the school committee? And authorities. That we are gonna want to get their. Approval on. And so they would do a first read and discussion of that November ninth, so that we would need to have that. In the shared drive by the fifth, is that adequate time?
Yeah, I think so, because we can start working on it now too, we know some of these FAQs are gonna be on there, right? So I don't need to wait until.
Right.
The meeting in two weeks to start writing a little bit, and if I can get it shared with you guys, we can start writing on our answers and then. We'll confirm the questions with the committee on the twenty-sixth and be able to show them, share with them our suggested responses to them on the night.
Yeah, okay. And then we just need to draft whatever, those engagement strategies and authorities that we want to propose.
Yep.
All right, that sounds like a good full agenda, is an hour an adequate amount of time, or do we want to plan for an hour and a half? Might want to give ourselves, if we end early, that's okay.
Yeah, I'll block it on my calendar for an hour and a half, that's fine, I, I.
I can do that, but I'm, I definitely gotta jump out a couple minutes before ten thirty.
Okay, all right, so that would be good, that, just in case, maybe we want to do some drafting during the meeting about what those. That engagement strategy and authorities are, so we can make that text really clear. Okay, I think we have our agenda, we have our next meeting, is there anything else we need to be addressing today?
We need to approve the minutes of the last meeting in this.
All right, you know what, we've never really done that in our subcommittees. I kind of, I kind of figured that we are approving them when I send the draft out. To, I think, I, I think I did that last time, right, and I sent the draft, you got, yes, I did, I said if you, you know, let me know, otherwise, if I don't hear from you by Friday, I'm sending them on to Christie. And so I kind of think of that as the approval of the minutes.
That's fine, maybe.
Okay. All right, so I will do the same thing, I'll write up this meeting and I will. Probably post it in our folder for this meeting as a Google Doc, and then just ask you to put comments in or. You know, make your edits clear if you see anything that needs to be revised, and then this is Thursday, can we have that done by? Tomorrow?
Yeah, I can take a look at it.
Okay, all right, great, that way we'll get them in the shared drive in time, I guess we have time, okay, that's great, thank you very much, I appreciate your work on. PowerPoint thing today, that was helpful. Forward hope, so this would be good to bring it to school committee, I feel good about, you know, kind of getting it to that place, I think we're, I think we're making progress.
Awesome.
Right, thank you.